Now called to order the November fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen meeting of the New County Independent School District at six thirty P M. Let the minutes show that a quorum is present with Mr. Johnson being absent. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Ms. Harrell and the pledge of allegiance to be given by Mr. Turner.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we come to you tonight with umble hearts. We're so grateful for your love of our nation and your blessings upon us. We ask continued support for our leaders at the nation level and at the local level. We honor you in all that we do and pray that you are always in our focus when we make plans and decisions. Bless this district and God bless America in Jesus's name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of our states of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On your text of fire, what you may think is the seat of our state under God, one indivisible.
I'm two on the agenda's public hearing for the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen campus improvement plan for campus formerly rated improvement required in the state accountability rating system presented by Ms. Abell.
Good evening. Well, it was about this time last year that I was here before you talking to you about our first year as New Caney Middle School and our situation of being improvement required. So what I'm gonna do is show you just a few quick slides, gonna show you where we were, where we are now, and where we're going in the future. Okay, so here were our scores from the end of twenty fifteen, the spring of twenty fifteen. There are four scores that you're graded on as a school, and those fall under four different indexes or indices. There are student achievement, student progress, performance gaps, and post-secondary readiness. Student achievement is simply a percentage of your success with making the required standard for passing for that year. We were fifty-nine, the target score was sixty. Student progress was twenty-seven. That is not a percentage, but that is a point system where students actually earn points for the campus to show you how much progress that they have made and mean how much are they improving on their tests over the course of their years or their testing history. So we made twenty-seven, fell short there, twenty-eight was the required goal. Performance gaps looks at the third category, looks at the different subpopulations you have in your campus. So that would be things like low socioeconomic students, ELL students, African-American, white, and so on. And then post-secondary readiness was the only one that we hit, and just barely so. Fifteen of thirteen is a target score, post-secondary readiness, and this one often shows up more in high schools than it does in middle schools. But in the middle school situation, it does look at how many students are repetitively successful or successful on more than one test. So if you're sixth graders, again, this is not a percentage, but a score that students earn points for the campus, so to speak, and it looks at, for sixth graders as an example, math and reading, how many kids made both their scores in both of those tests. For our eighth grade, it would be out of the four tests, they take math, science, social studies, and ELAR. How many of them got two out of the four tests and made the required progress there? So that was last year's, or I'm sorry, the twenty fifteen score. So last year's, how we've done this past year. Well, I'm happy to report considerable amount of growth over that course of the year, but we are no longer. Thank you, and that's not, you know, that goes without saying, there's been a lot of teamwork involved in making that happen. That's from our consultant, Dr. Saltis, Mr. Freeman, Dr. Neal, a number of our CLT members, which is our campus leadership team, including lots of department heads, our APs, counselors, and on down to our teachers, and of course, our students who make that happen. So obviously, we've made our scores there in each of the areas, particularly proud of the growth in index three and index four. So really, the question is why were we in that situation and how did we get out of that is usually the first thing that's on most people's minds. Well, if you take a look at our practices from twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen, you'll see that there's a drastic change in what we were doing in twenty fifteen versus what we did in twenty sixteen. Really, the bottom line is twenty fifteen goals were too vague, and they were really focused on where we were as a campus the year prior, as a sixth grade campus. We really just targeted math and reading, very quickly realized that's not going to do it. We're gonna have to focus in all of our core areas, put down specific goals, and also measure them quarterly. So that was another big change. Instead of looking at our goals annually, it's making sure that we more frequently check in with them, design specific interventions with our students, and set specific goals for our students, so our students now track their own goals. It brings an air of positive competitiveness among the students, and I think the teachers and students would both say that they appreciate that because the kids can kind of see in real time where they are and what they're doing, and that's the intent there. Also, definitely a greater number of students in interventions that are designed specifically what their needs are rather than more general interventions where you try to deal with an entire class or more individually with students. And then also increasing the amount and type of our training for our teachers and teacher leaders. So those were our practices and our practice changes. So where do we go from here, mid-year for twenty sixteen and beyond? Well, where you see the grid check marks is where we'll continue to use those same practices as before, but we're also gonna start making some additional changes. We went from two goals to three goals to now four goals that are focused in the core areas, and we'll eventually expand to seven that include goals for specific subpopulations. So those are one of the major changes that we'll continue to make, and that's where we'll kind of max out our goal setting. Because at some point, too much goal setting and too much focus on too many different things can certainly lead you to the other end of the pendulum swing and stray you from your focus, and we don't want to do that. So some of the other changes, we'll implement all of our goals earlier. We've been in the process of developing our goals in August, September, and getting them underway in October. Now that we have a pattern of we know how to do this, we'll begin to do that in the spring and summertime and then prepare our goals early enough so that we can immediately start in September. And then, last but not least, we'll continue to sharpen our training and be more specific about what types of training support individual goals. In the past, we permitted training to go with kind of how we felt or where we thought we needed to have our training. Now, we're looking at data more closely to determine exactly what type of training and what groups need those trainings. So in closing, we certainly expect to maintain a steady growth. From where we are, we'll continue that process, keep sharpening our skills, do that throughout this next upcoming year. We are already currently seeing this year's curriculum-based assessments, our tests that we do out through the fall, and we would expect in the spring to continue to see that growth, so we're seeing that now. So we would expect our scores to continue to go up from where they are even now. So while we do that, probably the most important thing is our last bullet. We want to do this and not take away or not sacrifice from the things that kids love about school. Certainly don't want it to become a, just a testing environment, so our teachers are always looking for new and innovative ways to engage kids, do fun things with them. In fact, I was just talking with Dr. Neal about some of the things that teachers should just come back from CAS, which is the big science convention for the year, and some of the things that they can implement in the classroom while still focused on our goals. So we'll continue that excellence in collective and extracurricular programs as well, and if I see you back here in the studio, it'll be to tell you about even some more cool scores, I hope so. So if not, then we'll be doing great. Pending your questions, that's it.
Mr. Franklin, can I talk to you a little bit of the board?
Yes.
The reason why you don't see Tabula here, as we did last year, they're not actually formally rated IR, because Tabula wasn't actually rated IR, it's Aiken. And so by law, we don't do this public hearing, but I do want to let you know that they actually did come out of IR, Aiken would have come out of IR as well. So, congrats.
I'm three on the agenda's public hearing for the twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen financial integrity rating system of Texas presented by Mr. Calvin.
Good evening, y'all. This is our fifteen, sixteen hearing for our first rating. I don't know if y'all have showed up for this, it's not just for me. There's a sign in chief right there in the back, so we got a record of your attendance. Handouts are available back there as well. Let's dive right in. Some of y'all are familiar with the system. This is essentially the financial star test, to say. A little bit of background first, just for the public's benefit, that's Texas Education Code. The National Intelligence Commission tells you you gotta have something in place to evaluate school's finances. Texas Administrative Code tells him to call first, lays out the process, how it's applied, all that sort of stuff. A little bit of background on the district's first ratings. Ever since two thousand and two, two thousand and three, all the way up to thirteen, fourteen, the district received a superior rating. That's as high as you can get, so there's a history there. In fourteen, fifteen, the district earned a rating of pass. Again, that's the highest rating you can get, but that's because the legislature initiated some changes to the system, so they took away those, you know, familiar terms that we're used to, and everybody was just essentially passed or failed. So again, the district got a pass mark there. This year, kind of again going with the campus accountability, we got a rating of A, which is equal to superior, kind of merging the old rating system with the new rating system that's probably coming. And all this is based on fourteen, fifteen information. So this, you know, nothing like having a game changer on you if you're on the plate. So it's a couple years back, but you know, it's the thirteenth consecutive year the district has received the highest possible rating in the financial system. Little bit about the indicators. Indicators one through five are yes or no questions, they're considered critical indicators. If you get a no on one of those, no matter how many more points you get, you automatically fail. And so I can stand here and not tell you we got yes on every single one of those, but that's fortunately the right thing. Indicator six through fifteen, those are where most of the changes occurred, and those have points associated with them. Nine, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, it's kind of an all or nothing deal. You get zero or ten based on where you fall with the question or, you know, ratio of that. Six, seven, eight, ten, and eleven, you can get zero, two, four, six, eight are all ten points. There's one indicator we didn't get all ten points on, and that's indicator six, so I wanted to show you all exactly what that one was. We got four points on that one, and the question on the actual document, you know, is the number of days of cash on hand. Y'all will know that is fund balance, you know, where was your fund balance level? You know, that's always on the radar. Y'all probably do talk about it, you bring it, we talk about it. So essentially, that's what this question is asking us for, and our breakdown fell within that four-point range. You could see in your packet exactly how many points we needed to get to ten. Y'all know, like I just said, that's a challenge for us because that's the fastest-growing force district in the state. You know, we want to continue to do the things like, you know, give those competitive teacher salaries, give those raises to retain our staff, open new campuses, all that nature. You know, we've been blessed with a dollar seventeen minimum tax rate, where we can do all those things, but at the same time, being as fast growing as we are, it's difficult to achieve all those points in this indicator. So it's definitely on our radar, but it's a challenge that I foresee us having for a while. So in summary, you know, A is superior, it's the highest we can get. We did score ninety-four out of the possible hundred points, six of those points been in that one indicator. Hopefully, that'll improve. The next part of this, the Texas Administrative Code tells us we have to do a financial management report, and that's on the transparency side, you know, just like the campuses have their accountability ratings to give the public a window into what's going on. This is their window into finances. How are we doing? Are we accountable for what we're doing? Are we managing money well? So it's great to receive those ratings. This next part is more in the transparency realm than it is the accountability realm. That's the end of the presentation, so I'm gonna hit these disclosures. The first disclosure is a superintendent's appointment contract, and Mr. Franklin has that posted online. So tomorrow morning, you all will vote the copy of that contract, if y'all approve in September, it'll be posted online for the public to see. The next part is reimbursements received or paid on behalf of superintendent and board members. You can see what I'll make out of that category, you know, it's meals, lodging expenses, transportation reimbursements. That other category, that's your membership fees, so that's what's all lumped in there. So I'm just gonna run through the totals, just as you see it on the sheet. Mr. Franklin's total for the period ended eight thirty-one, twenty fifteen was eight thousand, one hundred eighty-six dollars, ninety-eight cents. Ms. Harrell's is twelve hundred, twelve dollars, fifteen cents. Mr. Marrow's nine hundred fifty-six dollars, forty-seven cents. Mr. Johnson, three hundred fifty dollars. Mr. Turner, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars, ninety-five cents. Mr. Wright, three hundred fifty dollars. Mr. Shively, nine hundred eighty-eight dollars, ninety-five cents. Mr. Veron, three hundred fifty dollars. And Mr. Mixon, fourteen hundred eighty-one dollars, forty-six cents. The next thing we have to address is whether any outside compensation or fees received by superintendent for professional consulting or other personal services, there were none. Number four, gifts received by executive officers and board members have a value of two hundred fifty dollars or more, again, there were none. And business transactions between civil district and board members. We did have one for that period, and that was Mr. Veron for Rocky Horse Day Care in the sum of eleven thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars. And that concludes our first rating, as well as us's quarters we have to make.
Okay, I don't wanna, I have four on the agenda's recognition. Start with S and As from Crippen Elementary.
Hello, it's my pleasure to introduce our student representative. It is Alia Cleveland Harris. She's a fifth grader at Crippen. She has a very calm presence, witty ideas that demonstrate her leadership amongst her peers. She works hard, and her teachers can always commend her to lend a helping hand. She's a part of many different activities at Crippen, and I'm proud to be her principal. Come on up, Alia.
You want us to wait for a while, or do you want us to hold it off?
Next is our teacher representative. She is LaRisha Owens. Ms. Owens has been a model teacher at Robert L. Crippen Elementary for over fifteen years. She is beloved by students, teachers, and parents. She generally loves students and pushes them to be their fullest potential. Her positive attitude inspires others, and she is also a member of the New Caney ISD curriculum team and helps other teachers with the guided math initiative. Our paraprofessional representative is Ingrid Rodriguez. She is an invaluable team member at our school. She helps lead our rocket fuel parent volunteer program. She also plans and delivers inquiry-based science activities. Her kind spirit and love of students inspire all of us to show the same dedication and support for all of our students. Next is our custodial representative, and her name is Sandra Molesky. She literally makes Crippen shine. Her tireless dedication to making our building spotless helps set the right tone for all of our school climate. She maintains high standards for herself and her team, and she motivates others by Next, we have our child nutrition representative, and her name is Kendi Tatum. Kendi's a new manager and is doing an excellent job at Crippen Elementary. She has been with the district for several years, worked in all areas of the kitchen, and has a desire to learn and grow. Her main focus is to ensure all of our students receive a nutritious meal daily. And last but not least, our transportation representative is Yanah Corias. She drives bus three fifteen, which is one of our double-run buses. Her routes are the largest routes. She greets each child with a smile and is very positive influence for them. She loves her kids, and it shows, and we appreciate her very much.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to make some recognitions tonight. My first is with transportation, and that is a tough job. We all know, driving the buses. That's why I don't even care. But Mr. Saul Hernandez always has a smile. He greets every, like we said before, he greets every child by name. He never raises his voice. When I ask my teachers, who do we need to recognize, their first thing, without hesitation, was Saul Hernandez. And my teacher, Michelle Lamero, is a pre-K teacher. They deserve a special place in heaven, pre-K kindergarten teachers. She comes to school every day with a smile, her children, even though she's had some kind of large classes. You walk in there, routines are known, she never complains, and just does a fantastic job. Her kids love her, her parents love her, and I love her as well. Custodian, Donna Cameron. Donna is the type of custodian that I learned when I first came, and she came over to us and that I don't have to tell her what to do. I don't have to worry if things are set up for programs, I don't have to worry if little dribblers are let in, and all these things that she does. In fact, she just came from school just now, so she stays later than she should and needs to. You have to run her out of the building, but she's one that I never have to worry about things getting done. And our child nutrition, Angie Moak. We had a new turnover this year in our cafeteria, new manager, new people from all over everywhere coming, so there was some adjustment time that we went through. But I'll tell you, Angie never, ever failed to have a smile. She greeted those kids, she knows those kids by name, she serves them and makes them, just makes their day at lunchtime. So Angie, thank you for it. And Faith Cox. This is a surprise, she didn't know she was getting this. Faith is a good favorite from Oakley. She just got back from Pine Cove, and by the way, had an awesome time, yes. She's a member of our student council, safety patrol, she helps our pre-K students go through the cafeteria at lunch. She finishes her lunch and her breakfast, and she helps them get through it, get through the line. So she's, she works out front, putting kids in cars, and I know if there's anything I need, Faith is my go-to girl. Thank you.
I'd like to honor this evening to ask Ms. Sarah Maka to come up here, please. Ms. Maka is a social studies teacher at Infinity Elementary College High School. She was the teacher of the year, chosen by Infinity. She also represented our district as teacher of the year, and then moved to the region as teacher of the year. Out of the forty teachers in the region, she was chosen to be the top three in the state of Texas, and so she was a finalist for that award. So we'd like to recognize Ms. Sarah Maka and say thank you for all your work, for being
We're gonna make a slight adjustment to the agenda. We're moving the part of item eight up. Mr. Shank will provide an education foundation update.
Hello, your education foundation just had the fan club last week. We gotta go out and make a bunch of rackets in these people's schools and have a great day. Gave out thirty grants this year. Individual teachers' grants were a little over eighty-three thousand dollars, on top of the fifty thousand dollar cornerstone grant that went into every media center, not others, one campus across the district. So we did shade over one hundred thirty-four thousand this year in grants. That puts us close to the half million mark since inception in four grant giveaways. So it's a pretty, pretty good trajectory there. This year, it won't say down, but it was flat. Imagine that oil prices effect used to be coming a little bit, and we had some of that going on, but we still managed to do about the same number of grants, just about the same dollar amounts, and had a great time last week. I had a friend of mine that talked to someone from Huffman ISD the other day, and all they could talk about was things that New Caney was doing. The New Caney School District, even the education foundation, they've got a new education foundation now, and we're trying a lot with all of New Caney. Didn't know we had anything to do with it, just listening to us. That's great. Hats off to the board, y'all are doing a great job, and people are noticing, and that's a good thing. Just wanna thank y'all for the support for the foundation. It's been a great year. Thank you.
Out of five on the agenda's open forum, I don't think we had anybody to sign up for that. Out of six on the agenda's closed meeting, the board will now meet closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code, section five five one point oh seven four, for the purpose of personnel matters, Government Code five five one point oh seven one for attorney consultation, and Government Code five five one point oh seven two for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. The time is seven o'clock. Board end is closed meeting at eight twenty-five, and will now reconvene in open session. Item seven on the agenda is reports and proposals of board members. Item made on the agenda is superintendent's report. Starting with Mr. Freeman.
Say a few things about our seventeen, eighteen course guides. We had those, the middle school course guide and the high school course guide. I'm going to talk a little bit about the process. Both guides had our directors for our program to go through, as well as instructional specialists in the core areas to be able to go through and look at any changes. And then, once that was done, in the middle school, the guides were sent to the counselors and the principals, and then also at the high school, the principal and the deans. So tried to get as many people to look at them as we could, and gone through that process. January and through January, the first part of February will be our course selection process for both the middle schools and high schools. It's obvious going through out of the screen in February through seventeen, eighteen. So any questions? Sorry, okay, thank you.
All right. Next, under operations facility assessment presentation. Philip, if you'd like to come on up and let you get started, you and Leon. I'll let you introduce who you are and who you're with.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franklin. It's a real pleasure to be here with you tonight. My name's Philip Russell. I'm vice president, program construction management for Volker. And my colleague here, as we embarked on his vice president, program construction management. Leon is our principal charge of every contract that we manage throughout the southeast. And so if you will, we're going to try to move through. I know you had a long evening, but we're going to get to the presentation right now and maybe.
Turn it on, okay, thank you.
The presentation, I'm going to give a brief overview of Volker, our relevant corporate services, our experience, and then I'm going to turn it over to really Leon and get into the methodology of how we provide facility assessments and capital improvement plans for school districts throughout the southeast. Volker's a ninety-one-year-old company, been around a long time. We have approximately nine hundred employees. We're employee-owned, which is a sense of pride to all of us. We've done literally billions of dollars of projects throughout the southeast. We have offices in Houston, Dallas, and Austin, and so we have a footprint here. Bill, I work for TechDoc. Volker is a big civil engineering firm as well, and so we've got a long history here. We're considered one of the leaders in the K-12 construction and facilities management. Again, I won't go through that, but the relative corporate services, I think the main one's the third bullet, which is facility assessments and feasibility studies of school districts. So about eighty percent of our work that Leon and I do is in the K-12 arena. In fact, when you look at our experience, State Development actually hired us to come in and develop their assessment program that all their school districts have to do every year throughout the southeast. Our personnel are very experienced in K-12 work. Leon has probably over the last fifteen years managed close to two billion dollars in K-12 work. I retired as an assistant superintendent for facilities for a district in Alabama, so I've been in the construction business my whole life, and so we've got a very experienced team again. What I want to do now is I want to turn it over to Leon and really talk to you about our methodology and the way Volker goes about providing facilities assessment, capital improvement plans. I want to make one point here. We're not an architectural firm, we're not a contractor, even though we have contractor license. We are basically a firm that comes in and helps school districts with feasibility studies, management of construction if necessary. I know you have a very experienced staff here, and so I'll let Leon talk to you a little bit about our methodology.
Philip. Good evening. So we're going to talk about our four phases of how we do these facility assessments. It's something, it's a process that we developed over the past fifteen years or so, and have done this specific process for dozens of school systems, literally millions of square feet of facility, specifically K-12 facilities. It's a four-phase process. The first part is this physical assessment. We've got to get an understanding of the physical condition of all of your buildings. And so we're going to send out a crew of very experienced facility assessors to walk through all of your facilities and take a look at every single type of building system, all the features, the physical features of your various facilities. So your HVAC systems, your life safety systems, your exterior envelope, roofing, windows, doors, your site, your stadiums, your parking lots, everything that comprises the physical condition of your facility. We've got twenty different specific forms that we'll fill out for every single space in that facility, from your lighting levels to the level of your finishes, to the roof leaks, flooring, HVAC systems, everything that possibly makes up that particular facility. We'll have a very cataloged, very detailed assessment of those physical facilities. Excuse me. And a part of that assessment, obviously, is to determine not only the general condition of that facility, but what the critical needs for that facility are. And those needs can be not only from a physical standpoint, meaning we witness roof leaks and your air conditioning doesn't work, but also do you have too many feeding waves in your cafeteria? Does your traffic work? Your traffic patterns work for your blessing, your car to be separated? So we look at all the various performance characteristics of that facility. Second part of our study is a demographic study, and we understand that you all have done these demographic studies in the past. What we recommend to do is not to rehash that study, those are very expensive detailed studies, but to review your study and to update it as needed to make sure that our projections are accurate with your current growth projections. And we understand that it's obviously a very fast-growing school system. We use a gentleman, X D Salmon, he's renowned throughout the southeast for his work, extremely accurate, and we would use him as a sub to us to do this working meeting. Now we've done your physical assessments, we have taken a look at your growth in the system to get an understanding of sort of where you stand currently as a milestone baseline for your facilities. And then a very important part of our assessment is that, you know, we're not living in and around your school system every day, in and around your community, your politics, the condition of your specific area. So what we'd like to do is come in and do input sessions with all the various stakeholders that comprise these schools, not only the people that work in the facility, the central office staff, it can be parent groups if needed. We really want to get an understanding of what the good and bad points are of the physical plants and facilities to understand what the pursuit needs are for the community. And from that, we will then get an understanding of if we recommend new facilities, additions, renovations, what those facilities need to look like. Every school district does things a little bit differently. You all, obviously, have a fantastic stadium. That's not something that a lot of school districts have of this nature, so we want to know that that is the standard that you guys want to proliferate in your school system. So it's very important for us to understand what you're basing on, what your goals are for your facilities in the school district. So again, based on our input sessions, based on our understanding meeting with your facility staff, your maintenance staff, we want to know what kind of systems you'll have in your buildings, the type of flooring, the HVAC system, roofing. All those factors affect eventual cost of your construction, there's a lot of different ways to build buildings. So we want to make sure that we understand how you want your buildings built, the amenities that you want in the buildings, that our cost projections are very accurate. We've done all of our background work, and so then we're going to go back and take a look at what our findings are and then start coming up with recommendations. There's a lot of different ways, could be a lot of different options that we could present to. So what we're going to do is we're going to come to you and present our preliminary findings, preliminary recommendations to the board. Oftentimes, our clients want us to present these to the public as well, to get public input. You know, these schools affect the entire community, and so we want to make sure that there is as much input as the board wishes to our eventual findings. All that is your technical advisor, going out to the community and doing these public presentations and getting their input. And so based on all those findings, based on our input, and you all's review of our initial recommendation, and then put together a final report for the board for your consideration. Any questions?
One of the, you know, one of the things that we probably look at, we probably consider this is an initial step, but then we would probably also be interested in the marketing side of this, also providing support for that. Tell us a little bit about what Volker does as far as your input to our public conversations department, and how you guys work with us to do that draft a plan.
Sure. And we talked a little bit with your administrative services about your funding sources and how things work here, and what your opportunities are. And obviously, funding is a major issue, the school system is growing a thousand students per year, and you guys need five ways to build capital capacity to do capital improvement. And so oftentimes, these studies are done as a basis to go out to the community for tax referendums or whatever is needed, to explain to the community, the taxpayers, what the needs are. And so, you know, we work oftentimes with our clients to go out and present these findings as a part of a capital program for whatever bond issue that you all want to embark upon as the technical rationale for why you need to do what you're doing. And so we're happy to go out to the public, have community meetings at your leisure to make sure that the community understands technically why you're asking for these markets.
Another point that we've had a discussion with Philip about is looking at, we're really concerned with our long-term planning, not only for this next block, or where we're going to be in three years, five years, ten years, and we understand the accuracy the further you get out in the day. But tell us a little bit about your strategic planning and how that would work with us in an overall bond program for our district.
Technically, Mr. Franklin, these studies are done either on a five-year or ten-year basis. Anything beyond that, the accuracy of those projections really fall off. So oftentimes, it's ten-year projection, we'll have the demographics paraded out that far, and we'll also do sort of cost projections based on incremental increases over those years or so.
And that's not static? That's, I mean, that's, you're pretty flexible on that? Do you update along those periods of time?
We can, we can.
Can you stay on board for that and say, okay, next five years, ten years, here's where we are with this, and what adjustments do we need to make? Because if it's just a static, studying ten years out, I'm not sure.
No, they do some other documents, obviously. I'm sure five years ago, you all would not have predicted that you're where you are now, or ten years, so.
So we could use you guys to help with that journey, be with us during that.
I hope you like our work so much, you use us every time. Absolutely. Thank you all very much, Jim.
And Mr. Franklin, I've got some samples of some work that we did in a previous school district. I want to leave that with the school board members. We normally go through this over about thirty minutes, so we really compressed it. I do want to say this to you, Mr. Franklin, if any of your board members wants to come back, maybe drill down to some specific things and how we go about doing it, we'd be happy to do that, okay?
And we did request just a quick overview of that. So it's not that these guys didn't want to give us a load of information, but we just wanted a quick overview and to give us some insight as to what they do and how they function.
And this is a school district where we only did a couple facilities because we didn't want to lug around extra-large boards, but I'll give you some idea. Thank you again, Mr. Franklin. Appreciate it.
Item nine on the agenda is consent calendar, consistent consideration of minutes, consideration of finance reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, and consideration of donations. Any questions or discussion? Motion approved that item one is the second. Motion been moved to second. All of the papers say aye. Item ten on the agenda is consideration of approval of the 2016, 2017 improvement plan for campus formerly rated improvements required in the state accountability system presented by, up near, my system is trapped.
I'm asking tonight, since you heard the presentation by Mr. Alfred, that you approve the improvement plan that has been created by that campus. It has to be submitted in the next couple of weeks, but we need your approval for that.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve the 2016, 2017 improvement plan for the campus formerly rated improvement required in the state accountability system? Motion been moved to second. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved. Item eleven on the agenda is consideration of approval of naming elementary number ten
Action item number eleven regards the board's consideration of naming elementary school number ten, Dogwood Elementary.
What'd you think about it, Rodney?
It's a good idea, isn't it? Thanks.
Is there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the naming of elementary number ten as Dogwood Elementary?
I'll move that.
Oh, good.
Yes, you did.
Motion's been moved to second. All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
All of the opposed? Motion is approved. We have Dogwood Elementary. If there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned at eight forty.